Got Linda coming in. I hereby call the City of Buellton City Council Meeting for March tenth, two thousand twenty-two to order. If I could get Councilmember Lewis to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll call Linda.
Okay, Councilmember Andrisik.
President.
Councilmember Lewis.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor King.
Here.
And Mayor Sierra.
Here.
Thank you very much. Next is reordering of the agenda. Are we going to reorder the agenda tonight?
No ma'am, no reordering this evening.
Alrighty, then we go to public comments. This is the public's opportunity to speak for three minutes about anything they want to talk about. Comments, complaints, compliments. We love compliments. I have one public speaker and that would be Judith Dale. Step on up, please.
I'm actually here for the library.
Do you want me to move it to that? Or for the library?
Yeah, the library.
Ad hoc.
And I'll speak on the other one too, probably.
Probably.
I'm on the County Ad Hoc Library Committee, which is an offshoot of the Library Advisory Committee, which Holly sits on and sometimes John comes to. But anyway, to make a long story short, the county, I wanted to bring you up to speed. The county is seriously considering JPA to, for two things. Number one, to get the library system in the county a little more united, because right now it's in four districts and the districts really don't interact with each other that much. It's, to be honest with you, it's a mess. Don't quote me on that.
It is.
It is.
Yeah. And secondly, to raise some funds, because so the JPA, if it does get originated, would look at either a parcel tax or a sales tax countywide. So if you want to be up to speed on this, the consultant that the county has hired is willing to come speak to city councils and electeds. So I'm just here to see if you would like them to come give you a presentation on this process and what, you know, and get your input on whether you want it, you don't want it, you'll support it, you won't support it, and what it can do for Buellton and so on and so forth. So basically, you know, you don't need to make a decision tonight. But tell Scott and you and he and I can be in touch and get you if you would like a presentation from the county's consultant.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and it's good. Ed?
I just had a question for council. Can, is there a format where people, we could just put maybe a notice in the paper that anybody interested, instead of saying, well, we opened it up, nobody called?
Well, it's mainly to educate you, but public is always welcome, you know, because this is, in a way, I think this is going to be an easy sell countywide, and in a way, I think it's going to be a hard sell, because it's going to be a tax increase, either sales or parcel. And, you know, which one it will be. You know, we need to get input. This ad hoc committee needs to get input from all over the county on what they will support. And hopefully, this North County, South County schism will not raise its ugly head in this. And the libraries are pretty, pretty sacred and people do support them. So I think this has a chance to do it. And but I think the only way to do it is a JPA.
Are you looking at twenty twenty-four then?
Probably. Yeah, 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 no, there's no way we could get, it'll be a mayoral to get to get our act together by twenty twenty-four, to be honest with you. But don't quote me on that either.
Nobody's listening, no.
No, nobody's listening. But, well, anyone that's, that's involved with the libraries would certainly agree. So I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. This is happening. I'm definitely in support of it and will help in any way I can, not only for Buellton, but for the county. And my past remarks is since you do like compliments, this is great. I'm not sure Buellton needed it, but we kind of had to do it. And I'm on the County Committee for School District Organization. So that's committee is hearing every single school district in the county that is doing this. And so I'm fairly familiar with what you've gone through and, and your demographic study and all that. Right on, Buellton.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other public comment tonight about any item on or off the agenda? Nobody, okay, I'm closing public comment.
Did we need to?
You can do that under, you can do that under Councilmember Comments Items, if you want to bring it back. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, consent calendar. We have five items tonight. The minutes of February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, regular city council meeting, list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, the monthly treasures report, January thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, resolution number twenty-two dash zero five, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, adopting an update to the two thousand five community design guidelines, and resolution number twenty-two dash zero six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, proclaiming the continuing need to meet by teleconference. Any questions of staff on the site? Alrighty, a motion in a second.
Okay, Vice Mayor King.
Right.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrisik.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye, thank you. Do we have any presentations tonight?
No presentations this evening.
Alrighty, moving on to public hearings. Agenda item number six, resolution number twenty-two dash zero four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, adopting the Measure A, five-year local program of projects for fiscal years twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. Our contact tonight is Public Works Director Rose Hess.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Member City Council. So this is our annual local Measure A allocation program of projects. We bring this to council every year as, as SB CAG. Those are five-year programs of potential allocations on a rolling five-year basis. Just to recap, the city uses our Measure A funds to supplement our local street and roads repair and maintenance program, as well as to also subsidize some of our different transit programs, including the Dial Ride, the Wine Country Express, and the Sanas Valley Transit. So those items are allocated and provided in Exhibit A to the resolution. This year, the anticipated estimates that are revenues from Measure A for our local allocations have increased from last year's estimates. So they are provided on page two of your staff report, starting with an estimate of four hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars for fiscal year twenty-two dash twenty-three. So for the next five-year period, based on these estimates, the five-year total period would be approximately two million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars that would be allocated locally for the city of Buellton. The attachment Exhibit A to the resolution, as you'll note, shows the breakdown of what we estimate to be spread out between our actual road maintenance projects, which is in the above, under project descriptions, and then broken down by the estimates for the different transit and then pedestrian bike improvements. You'll see in there's Zoom. We alternate on the fiscal years as far as the citywide sidewalk and concrete repairs and allocation of fifty thousand, which we, this is just specific to this particular funding program. And then we have the annual multi-purpose trail reserve of the ten thousand annually that council had decided upon several years ago. So that is the breakdown for there. One of the things that we do need to also show with our Measure A allocations is we are required to have a percentage that goes towards alternative transportation, such as bike and pedestrian and transit facilities. And the requirement for the city of Buellton is five percent. And on that table, you'll see the calculation that shows based on the allocations that we've spread out over the years, we're actually providing twenty-five percent. So we're exceeding the minimum requirement that we have, which is a good thing for the city. So with that, staff recommends that the city council approve resolution ninety, twenty-two dash oh four to open the public hearing and receive any comments. And staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Does the city own any electric cars?
We do not.
There's a new Ford truck coming out.
I did get the notifications for that, so.
Okay, I do have a question. The, the, not that your question wasn't important. The total alternative transportation expenditures, we are not expending that money right now. Are we, we're putting it into a fund for alternative transportation?
The only thing that's going into a fund that's being accrued is the one for the River Trail, the ten thousand dollars. The other ones for the transit subsidy subsidies, those are part of the resources that we use when we make the payments to the different agencies that operate the, the funds.
Right, it just says that like the twenty-two, twenty-three total alternative transportation expenditures is ninety-seven thousand dollars. Is that from, from where?
That is our anticipated expenditures.
Okay.
If we pull out for twenty-two, twenty-three, if we pull out the ten thousand, that goes into our accumulative fund for the River Trail. And then we know our funding requirement for Dial Ride is two thousand dollars.
Okay, so all that is, all that is spent then?
Most of it is spent, except for the multi-purpose trail reserve.
Okay. Yeah, I was kind of hoping if we didn't spend it all, we could maybe bump a little bit more than our ten thousand into the trail.
Yes, actually, for this, we end up paying more in transit out of our general fund to.
Make up the difference. Okay, thank you. Okay, and there are no other questions. I'll open it up to the public. Do we have any public comment on this resolution twenty-two oh four?
No emails.
Closing public comment, bringing it back to council for discussion and possible adoption.
Is it not just a jury?
Move to adopt.
You're making them.
Oh, it is just a resolution. It's how we're spending our money. So Councilman Sanchez made a motion, Vice Mayor seconded it.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor King.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrisik.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye, thank you. Okay, ordinance twenty-two dash zero three. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, amending section two point oh four point oh six oh of the Buellton Municipal Code pertaining to city, city council compensation. This is an introduction and first reading. City Manager Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Back in January, the city council had a discussion item regarding the current level of city council compensation. Staff brought that to you after noting that it had been a number of years since the city council's compensation had been amended. State law does allow the city council to amend its compensation. However, there are a couple of limits placed on it, the most, most notable of which are that compensation increases are limited to five percent per year from the last time the council compensation was amended and that any amendment to the compensation not take place until after the next council member's election. Councilmember. Following discussion on this item back in January, the city council directed staff to return with an ordinance which would amend the council salaries to five hundred and fifty dollars a month per, for council members and six hundred and fifty dollars per month for the mayor. That would be effective beginning January of twenty twenty-three, if this is adopted this evening. The total fiscal impact to the city would be an increase of about seventy-eight hundred dollars for the year. The draft ordinance is before you as requested and it is available for first reading.
Okay, any questions for the city manager or, okay. Then I'm going to open it up to the public. Does the public have any input on ordinance twenty-two dash zero three?
No ma'am.
Nothing. Okay, closing it to public comment, bringing it back to council. This is an introduction and first reading.
For me.
No discussion? No discussion?
Discuss.
Okay, well, I will move that we, since I won't be around in January, and this does not affect me, I move that we proceed with ordinance twenty-two dash oh three, first reading and by title only and waive further reading.
Okay, Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrisik.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor King.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Councilmember comments slash items. I'm going to start at the far end with Councilman Sanchez. Do you have any comments or items you'd like to bring before council?
No, not this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor King, any comments slash items?
Oh, yeah, I guess I jumped the gun earlier. I, I think that it wouldn't hurt anything for us to have somebody from JPA come here and talk to us and tell us what, what it would entail and at least have them come and give us a presentation, what kind of numbers we're going to get for many increases in taxes and et cetera, et cetera. And I can't see there's going to be that much, so I don't see the harm in it.
I, I agree with that. Do we have a third person so we can have majority moving forward on bringing in discussion of a JPA library? Alrighty, any, any other comments slash items?
Not at this time.
Okay. Councilman Andrisik, do you have any comments or items?
No, not at this time.
Councilmember Lewis, do you have any?
I do. I actually, we all got an email from a Kathy Herringer from the Senior Center, which is now the Sanas Valley Community Outreach. And I was able to talk to her a little bit back and forth. And I did not know that the Senior Center Group also does like domestic violence, reaching out and things like that. And I just wanted to make sure that the rest of the council was aware. And I just wanted to make sure that the rest of the council was aware that they do more than just provide senior center meals, Meals on Wheels and that kind of stuff, because I thought that it was important for the public to know that as well.
They even take brown bag lunches up to the hotels on Avenue of Flags for the children to have breakfast to go to school in the morning. Yeah.
I just think it's important that I've heard people say, you know, like senior center meals are important, but there are other needs in the community that we need to meet as well. And I think that if they understood that those needs are being met under this umbrella, that it might help them be a little bit more open in their thoughts towards things. I like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. Okay. And I had a, I got a Green Team meeting, but one of the members of the Green Team, Annie Yakudis, has really been moving forward with community garden ideas. And I would like to bring, put her on an agenda for May. They've even got Erin Liggett from our Planning Commission, bringing students out and helping them figure out architectural landscaping designs for gardens and it's, it's amazing. She's a 501(c)(3) under the Bulton Education Fund. Appreciate that. And yeah, they're, they're, they're moving and she thinks she'd be ready in May for a presentation if, awesome. That it's okay with everybody too. Alrighty, cool. Alrighty, now we move on to written communications. Any written communications?
None this evening.
Alrighty, committee reports. I know Councilman Sanchez always has a committee report.
I don't have one.
Nothing?
Busy in the arts and culture.
Nothing, nothing? Okay. We had a joint use, but that's going to be kind of postponed. It wasn't a full group and people were coming and going. I had a pre-K meeting with the school. They have until, I think it's like April 2023 to start with the pre-K going. So that's interesting. And the Green Team met and I feel very safe in our community. We're talking about water and waste and all the important things that we need to stay green with. They mentioned the solar panels that the city has. I appreciate all the fencing gone. That's really nice. But yeah, our Green Team is doing well. Oh, you didn't have any accidents out there? Or did we? Or did we? Moving on. Business item number eight, ordinance number 22-02, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Bulton, California, adding a new chapter 1.17 to the Bulton Municipal Code to change the system of elections for members of the City Council from an at-large system to a by-district system and adopting a map describing the boundaries and identifying election sequencing for each electoral district. This is a second reading. And Mr. Murphy, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Normally this would be on the consent calendar. It's a separate business item tonight because state law requires us to give the public one last chance to comment before it becomes final. So all we need tonight is to open to the public and then after the public's had a chance to speak, again, motion to approve and the district being in the map will be all set. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Any questions for staff? Okay. Is there any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Okay. Closing public comment, bringing it back to council.
I move that we approve ordinance number 2202 in order to the City Council, City of Bulton, adding Chapter 1.17 to the Bulton, and that's a code to change the system of elections for members of the City Council from an at-large system to a by-district system, adopting a map describing, as we have discussed, which was 204, and describing the boundaries and identifying election sequence for the electoral district.
Alrighty.
Okay, Vice Mayor King.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Andresek.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Sierra.
Hi. Thank you. I think our audience members, right? I'm not sure we need district elections in Bulton, but now we have them. It'll, it'll all be.
The school districts are saying the same thing.
It'll all be fine.
Yeah.
It'll all be fine. Agenda item number nine, discussion regarding funding for Senior Center. Our contact tonight is City Manager Scott Wolf.
Madam Mayor, as the council is aware, my wife has been or had a few months of employment last year with the Bulton Senior Center. And therefore, due to state law, I'm required to recuse myself from any of the discussion here. So this evening, the report will be presented and was prepared by our Assistant City Manager for right now, Rose Hess.
Thank you very much. Director Hess.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. So we are bringing back to you tonight at the direction of council at the last meeting, the request from the Senior Center. And just to give the community and anyone that's listening a little bit of background, the Senior Center for the City of Bulton serves Bulton and the larger San Inez Valley. And their services do range beyond just providing nutritional services for the senior citizens. But they also provide transportation assistance and supplements and provide health services and just general better welfare services for the community at large and particularly for the city of Bulton. And with extensive, extensive services that they do provide, the Senior Center relies on quite a variety of funding sources that their director Pam Nico goes through great lengths to try to coordinate every year to make sure that they have the operational funds they need. During the past year, the Senior Center did lose one of their main funding sources for Meals on Wheels in particular, which is a large source of funds for them. They have also had reduction in funding sources in some of their other areas. So they are unfortunately left with a deficit to try to continue their operations as it stands. The Senior Center CEO Pam Nico, and as I mentioned, she's continued to do search for grants and different supplements to fill the shortfall. But timing and just the dollars itself, it still leaves them with a deficit. So they've requested assistance with their needs and to provide the cash flow that they need to sustain the Senior Center operations. And right now, Ms. Nico is requesting an advance of their fiscal year 2223 city grant in the amount of $70,000 and $70,203 to provide that in March of 2022 rather than July of '22. When we did our biannual budgeting process, the City Council did grant $68,826 for this fiscal year 202122 and an allocation of $70,203 for '2223. So this would just be in advance to provide the cash flow for them at this particular time. We're recommending that the council discuss the potential funding options for the Senior Center to see what would be available to meet their needs. And Ms. Nico is here also to provide additional details and information. Should council.
Thank you very much. Okay, before I go to speakers with Pam, do you have any questions for Rose?
No. The $68,000 that run out in July or is good through July?
They've already received that allocation in July of this, earlier this fiscal year.
Change in the calendar and start in the payment in.
Right.
Yes, yes, sir. That's exactly right. You're just, they're just asking that instead of paying the $70,000 this July, you move it up and pay it in March to help them with cash flow.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, then I'm going to open it up to the public. My first speaker is Pam Nico.
Thank you for having us, Mayor Holly. Councilmembers, staff, thank you for working with us. I know you've heard me say it over and over, but I'm going to say it again. For the last two years, since we've all been in the situation, I think it's important to know that that the program that you support, we have not shut down one day during COVID. We not one day sheltered in. We were able to continue to provide meals and all of our services throughout this, throughout this whole thing. I couldn't have done it. I do have to say that I couldn't have done it without Linda Litten, who has been there with me and has not sheltered in one day in two years. Because of the increase and because of just things that have happened with our seniors and the meals, we have a projected increase of meals by the end of this year in December of 100,000 meals. We're now serving 625 members of the senior community. We're the largest food distributor, not just Meals on Wheels, but the largest food distributor in the, in the San Inez Valley, as well as Los Alamos and actually most parts of Santa Maria. So I think that that's really important for the council to know. Just this, just this year, we've started working with the county on two different projects. One is the community kitchens where we're taking the commercial kitchens around the valley and putting them to use, whether they're training in a commercial kitchen or using our commercial kitchens that are around the valley for use, training some of the kids that go to the juvenile hall, come in, doing different things, doing autistic programs. And I think that it's really important to know that in, in this entire valley, there's only two community kitchens, certified kitchens, who have agreed to do this program. The Bulton Senior Center and St. Mark's. No one else is helping do this, help do this. The other program that we are involved is, is the Santa Barbara Rescue. Sorry, let me do it again. County of Santa Barbara Resource Rescue and Waste Management. We're working with the county as well as our director, Rose Hess. We're going around, we're finding all of the ways to rescue food. All of the, all of the restaurants, all of the grocery stores, every, every supplier of food. By the end of this year, I believe, Rose, right by the end of 2022, they have got to have a percentage of their food rescued and not go into landfills. We've been doing this for the last eight years unofficially. But now we have the help of the different resource centers. That means that when Albertson's has bruised vegetables, we can get them. That means that any of the restaurants that have leftover food at the end of night, we can do that. Some places are already doing that with us. Panera Bread at, on nine o'clock on Friday nights, Friday nights at nine o'clock, we drive to Santa Maria and we clean out their entire inventory that's left over. We do everything we can. Those foods, that food that we rescue gets reprocessed into soups, both for our Senior Center and the, and the Meals on Wheels as well as we'll be working with Ridley Tree, doing chemo patients, freezing the soups. Caregivers can drive by, get a bag of soup, get salad, get bread in a box that they can take at home and they can prepare it for themselves and the, and the chemo people. So, um, I'm not just coming and asking you for money for a quick fix. This is on script. This is just for me. We never stop trying to raise our own money. We have been so appreciative of any and all support that the city of Bulton has given us. I, we're doing a March for Meals, which we're walking from here to San Inez and then the Maverick.
How many miles?
Maverick?
How many miles?
Fifteen. But that's better than last year because last year I walked to Los Alamos. So walking to the Maverick is a lot better. Anyway, they gave us the Maverick to show, to show that for March for Meals, it's the anniversary of the Older American Act in 1972. It's the 50th anniversary. The Maverick has given us the bar on St. Patrick's Day to bring as many people in as we can. We are videoing that. And then I am taking that video and I'm flying to Arlington, Virginia to show the Meals on Wheels of America exactly what rule Meals on Wheels that they're trying to take funding away from, that we don't, we're not just going to quietly say, okay, we'll give it to the urban places where our people are really important and we're going to continue to fight for it. Hopefully, some of the city councils will be there. Joan Hartman has agreed to come and we'll have visiting nurses, a lot of the different organizations there. I'm so glad that things aren't blowing off. Sorry, I'm going to talk fast, but so great. On May 29th, I mean, I'm sorry, not May 29th, March 29th, I'm not sure if you're aware of it, but it's Vietnam Veterans Appreciation Day. And I put flyers in, in City Hall. And we will be doing a barbecue with visiting nurses and with the VFW over at the Presbyterian Church. All vets, all vets are eating free. We're going to have a whole program for them. No one was doing it in the valley. The VFW wasn't doing it. There was nothing in law. So our organization decided that it was worth it. So we'll be having that. It's from 12 to 2. We try to take care as many people in our valley as we can. I went off script, but we would so appreciate it because in looking at all the alternatives to not coming and asking for help, I don't, I, I'm not sure what they look like. So anyway, I would, I would really appreciate any and all support or any and all ideas that you can give us. Judith Dale put an article in the newspaper today, if you've seen it, if you haven't seen it, explaining what the 50th anniversary of Older American Act is and how our community takes care of them. So, thank you very much.
And honestly, you have talked to me about the alternatives and they don't meet the criteria, the same level of care that you give our seniors here in Bulton and the valley.
Thank you for saying that because, yeah, I mean, it's unacceptable, any other alternative. So that, other than taking really good care of them.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Pam before she sits down? No questions? You're good?
I have a thank you for you. You've sold the, you make Bulton a beautiful place.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We really do appreciate it. We were part, oh, I do have one more thing. I'm sorry. I was supposed to say it. I just want to say one thing because it's at the very end of my thing. We, no one in that organization, no one has had a raise or any increased vacations in the last eight years. We're not using money frivolously. It all comes in and goes to them. So I just wanted to tell you that.
Thank you. Alrighty, I'm going to open it up to public comment. I think the first one would be Judith Dale. And then if Irene or Marcia wish to speak for public comment, I'll come check with you after Judith is done.
I wasn't really planning to speak. I was here for the library. However, I cannot sit there without.
As a board member.
Yeah, as a board member. And as a person who's on three other nonprofits, obviously the library, the hospital and Allen Hancock. But none of them work as hard as this woman works and none of them are as grassroots down in the public as this organization is. This is really a gem for Bulton. And as Pam talked about, due to COVID and a whole bunch of things, inflation, and I could go on and on. You all know the issues better than I do. Funding has, is a problem. And this organization delivers over 375 meals a day to seniors, 75% of which are low income. Without this program, those people would not have food. I mean, not enough food anyway, and certainly not a balanced diet. I cannot emphasize much how important this is to the community of Bulton. And I truly encourage you to help through this tight time and help fund it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? Irene, did you have anything you wanted to add?
You know, I work at the Senior Center. I volunteer there and I watch Pam and Linda and that staff work their butts off. I'm sorry, I can't speak as eloquently as all, but they work so hard for our community. It is unbelievable. I did not realize that until I got involved with the center, how hard they work and stuff. So anything you can do for us is to be great. Thank you so much, Holly.
Thank you, Irene. Marcia Dunn, I see you're on mute. I don't know if we can fix that, but did you have anything you wanted to say? I'm not the host. I can't.
Here I am. Thank you, Holly. Yeah, I didn't know I was going to speak, but happy to. I volunteered off and on for over five years for the Senior Center. And it's not just about the lunches. It's about helping so many community members. Today, a lady came in that needed help with her husband for cancer and Pam went out and spoke for a long time. And I help volunteer. And I help volunteer any way I can and I've enjoyed it. I intend to keep volunteering and it's not, again, there's so many things that happen at the Senior Center to help our community. And, you know, without the volunteers, like myself and Irene and other people too, it's, it, it just wouldn't happen. And, you know, I would again, would ask the, the council to really think about, you know, granting Pam her wish for the funds. It's just so important. And I, I'm also a senior, seventy years old, and I help a lot of people in my community. You know, I, I live in the Mobile Home Park. I help a lot of people and we couldn't do without the Senior Center. So thank you. I'm glad I came in tonight.
I'm glad you came in tonight too. Thank you very much. Do you leave any other public comment?
No ma'am.
Alrighty, then I am hereby closing public comment, bringing it back to council for discussion. Yeah, not only do they take care of what you were talking, they, they drive patients to doctors of friends.
Yeah.
It just goes on and on and on and on. So I have, I have no problem advancing.
I would like to move to advance it.
Yeah. And then find some way perhaps in the future to help Senior Center.
I think right now, the amount of money that's allocated to them is allocated to them under the umbrella of the Senior Center and the services that they provide to the seniors and the Meals on Wheels. I think perhaps if we review that apportionment with the other services in mind, it might help when we're thinking about what monies they need because we're only really addressing one avenue of the services rather than the overall organization as a whole. And that may be a way for us to kind of take a look at those numbers.
Now, we don't do a full budget redo. You won't do a full budget redo until next year.
July? Oh, next year.
Next year. This is a two-year. So this is just, but we, we could certainly work when we go over budget and we look at what we have. We certainly can. That's a good time to do that. Okay, so we had a motion?
And a second.
And a second.
All right, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Vice Mayor King.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrusik.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Mayor Sierra.
Hi. And thank you all for the work you do. Thank you very, very much for the work you do.
Kudos.
Just not making faces, huh?
Thirty-one years, never been kicked out of a council meeting. It's a little unnerving.
First time for us.
Yeah. Alrighty, moving on to the City Manager's report.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. A couple of items for you this evening. As the City Council is aware, Bulton, along with the cities of Solvang, Carpinteria and Galita have been in negotiations with the Sheriff's Department regarding our law enforcement contracts for the coming fiscal year. At our last meeting, we reached a point where it was determined that we were far enough apart that there was not really much point in proceeding forward any further without some assistance. And so we are as a group have decided that it's time to look toward mediation for that. And I can't say much more than that at this point publicly, but that's where we're at. I just wanted to put that out there for your and the public's information that we are still working on it, but it has yet to be resolved. Secondly, just another, another update, library related. The library system is going through a process wherein they're updating their computer system for black gold from, from one software framework to another. And as a result of that, Bulton Library, along with the other libraries served by the Galita Library Department, will be closed for business on Friday, April twenty-second and Saturday, April twenty-third. They will reopen after that, but it is anticipated that both of those days will be necessary for that upgrade to take place. And so those days will be closed. I'll leave my report at that and we'd be happy to answer any questions that councilmen have.
Thank you. Any questions? No questions. Thank you very much, sir. John, did you have a question or you just straightened? Okay. We move on to a closed session item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council is being asked to go into closed section under Government Code, section five four nine five six point nine D four, which is the potential initiation of litigation. Facts do not need to be disclosed on an initiation matter. So we will now, I believe, adjourn in the closed session.
Alrighty, thank you very much.